Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,[12.16-13.16][S02] one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[13.16-14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16][14.16]
There are some things that can kind of extend those a little bit more. Like the residence barn, we actually held that pricey for six months at McGrath. So I think you probably want to do something similar here at Mark Twain. Just so that way we can get in, the asbestos tablet can be invaded at Mark Twain. And if you can see what those floors look like before we can decide if residence needs to be needs to be provided or if the slide is in good enough condition that we can do optional upgrades. If you guys have any other questions on kind of schedule or cost, I can kind of move into the design side of things now. So first up here, we've got the site plan. The new addition is the kind of block up there in purple. So that's going to be the new addition. It's going to dim out that existing link between the two-story and the one-story buildings. That will all be hand-filled with a new kind of addition, one-story through there. And then out here, so this is technically north looking up this way where the existing drive is. So that new addition, two-story, will go in in between that, the existing two-story and the existing drive. Site-wise, most everything remains mostly the same place. So you still have your main pickup drop-off drive coming in here. This lot down here in front of the existing library, that gets expanded upon just a little bit for ADA parking and visitor parking. The lot up here gets kind of reconfigured a little bit. Parking stalls remain as in, or in the same spot. The, that existing trash enclosure and dumpsters, those are being moved back here towards the south. They're kind of secured back behind the fencing there. This also helps to expand the parking as well and that parking lot as well by a lot of stall. The asphalt here is all set to be built overlay. The existing learning garden that is kind of contained within that ring there is getting reconfigured out here, just to the west of the gym there. And then next to that is a kind of outdoor classroom that's, is made of a stem seating that overlooks the playfield there and kind of can also double, play double duty as kind of like bleachers for people that might wanting to watch their kids practice out there on those playfields. Soft playground still remains at its existing location, same as the hard play, new striping up there. These dark green areas are either existing trees and playing beds or new or it's not existing. So as you can kind of see here, we've got some new playing beds going around the kind of the corner of the building. Some of those are kind of existing, so we're kind of bringing some of those, reestablishing those and kind of adding a few more in just to kind of bring some of that kind of nature feel to the building there. Elevation-wise, we kept everything pretty similar to what was done at McGrath. So we're looking at split face block, red brick blend that matches the existing Mark Twain, incorporating some keys just to keep costs down on the building on the new addition. And then shingles for the roofing material. Looking at it from a bird's eye view, so right here, the trees are omitted, so there will be trees that are just kind of omitted from this view just so you guys can see the new addition there. So this is going to be the new front entry here. This is the existing library over here, and this is the 1950's building with the gym and the 1968 building in the back there. The existing two-story is located right there. So, before entry here on the north side, adjacent to the visitor parking there, some kind of pedestrian seating up here up front that also acts as a vehicular barrier as well, kind of creating a nice little plaza area. This hillside does march up, so we've got some windows that look down into the library there. And the library is the ICC 500 storm shelter. So as we kind of go up the hillside here, that kind of begins to go beneath the grade there. Then up here at the top is where that A C S B parking lot is on the opposite side. So drives still remaining in the same spots, entry there. And we've got some nice north glazing there that allows some nice natural north daylight into the main entry commons there. And then there's a use up there on the top there, just to kind of reduce cost and take a similar approach to what was done at McGrath with the use on the second floor there, trying to tie these two together. So here's another view down at, kind of, that's a pedestrian view as you approach the main entry of the building. We've got a canopy there over the front entry just to bring the overall spade out for the kids as they approach the entrance to the building. Moving into the floor plan now, so that star is where we were just looking at. So this is going to be the main, the main entry here is a secure vestibule. So the second floors will be level three ballistic grade glazing storage systems. The red space here is the admin. So we're expanding upon the admin, providing specific spaces for the specialists, principal, psych, counselor, expanding semi, expanding upon the admin spaces as right now the existing Mark Twain is lacking on those spaces there. So those are going to be those areas in red. So as you enter into the main entry, there's a door that goes directly into there that is at ballistic grade glazing. And once visitors get checked in by the receptionist here, then they can move on throughout the building. So they'll buzz in here and then again that second pair of doors. Right here is the kind of main foyer area. It's two stories there, you've got a grand staircase here and the elevator that gets all three levels of the building there. So we'll hit the main lower level here, we'll hit this intermediate level that the 1930's building is at. So it'll be two-sided, the freight change is about three feet, so we're hitting all of those. And then it will go on up to the second floor as well. Next to that, we've got a range who also serves that intermediate level along with some staircases there. So those are being pulled out of their existing locations right there. This area here is going to be the new library. So as I mentioned before, that is the new storm shelter. We do have a couple of windows in there that allow natural light into that space. So it's not a kind of a dark dungeon-esque space since it is partially a little green. So we do have natural light coming in there. Rush rooms up in there, IT room and the library and storage room there. Going up here to this intermediate floor, we've got cafeteria remaining in these existing spots. New finishes there, new kitchen equipment as well. We're able to reuse half of that stuff, like the existing tables in there. They're in good quality, so we're able to save a little bit of money on that, on the kitchen, kitchen equipments. Mechanical space still remaining in the same place. We've got renovations to the music room here. The existing art room will become a maker space. And then up here where those nice big windows are from the cafeteria that look out into that existing learning garden, we'll be removing those windows and you'll be able to kind of freely walk in between the cafeteria and some flexible learning space out here and that kind of main commons for, for kids. Moving down here, we've got new game restrooms going in. So kind of gutting those existing non-compliant restrooms, making those larger ADA compliance. And then the kind of leftover space that is that existing teacher lounge would be getting transitioned into a vice skills room that has its own restroom off of that as well. Then lastly, on the main level, back here on the very south side of the site, we have the kind of K through two classroom corridor. So these existing spaces out on the east side of that building, we've got those being gutted and transforming those into indoor classrooms. Those would have their own restrooms located off of those as well. And then refinishing the first and second grade classrooms down there with a couple restrooms located at the end of the corridor there as well. Moving on to the second floor now. So this section right through here is going to be that existing 1930's building, the second story up there. And this here is our new addition. So out here on the top of that vestibule, kind of looking over that entry plaza, we've got a flexible learning space there with some flexible furniture that also overlooks the two-story commons area right here with that granite staircase. We've got a small group room for, for staff to kind of work with kids in either small group or interventionist to work more privately with a specific students. We've got new classrooms here in that addition and another flex area on the east side there. Moving into the 1930's building, we are doing a movement for renovations up there, gutting some of those walls, enlarging the classrooms that are located along this section here. So those two classrooms there are being barged. A portion of that kind of leftover space would be transitioned into some special education use along with these other two, or other two locations there and that kind of leftover classroom that we have. And then down here on the very ends are the last two classrooms. There is an existing kind of intermediate, that existing interventionist room there. We're kind of cutting that and expanding those walls to enlarge those classrooms there. So we're trying to take, look at enlarging all the classrooms there since especially in this building here, a lot of those classrooms are pretty small. So really trying to maximize, increase the size of those classrooms there for the students' needs. So up next, I just have some renderings of the interior of the kind of additions and renovations. So first, this is that foyer space of when you come in the main entry. You've got a grand staircase here, learning platform, just for kind of gathering underneath that. Up top here is going to be a second story with the classrooms kind of down that ring over there. This kind of cortical here is an entry into the library. And this is that elevator there that hits all three of those levels with the ramp right there adjacent to it. So here's another shot. This one looks a little bit more down that commons area, so we've got the cafeteria that's right over there in its, in its existing spot. So we've got that flexible learning right outside of there, there and some kind of additional space down here below as well. Those staircases that didn't step up to that intermediate level, it's kind of tucked away right behind the stripe here and a little bit further down the common space down there as well. So moving into the library now, these are those windows there. This is an ICC 500 storm shelter. So these do have storm shelters that will come down in the event that there is a storm. So those will come down to secure the building as well. And then the restrooms for that storm shelter are located on the opposite end of the library there with an exterior exit that exits out to an exterior stair, kind of tucked in the corner there for good reasons. Here's another shot of the library. This is looking at some riser platforms, another kind of element that we included at McGrath. So another kind of learning center element for kids to have kind of group reading on or kind of individual reading as well. So, and then the graphic on the background kind of comes back to Mark Twain and the Mississippi River, so. So just another shot of the library, reception desk there and the graphic in the background. And then that would take you back out to the main foyer space there. This is going out into that common space that I just mentioned about earlier. So these, kind of these windows here, those will actually go into the cafeteria. So you'll be able to freely walk in and out since those windows will be then dimmed out once this is completed. And this is looking back out into that commons area from the cafeteria there. Something that we included at McGrath were some hand washing stations. So we've got those over here, so when the kids are going to lunch, they can wash their hands before getting in line to get their finger. So this is a shot from the second floor foyer, looking down kind of into the foyer space. This is that nice north glazing, it allows that natural light in. And this is that flex area there that overlooks the kind of plaza area there down below. This here is a rendering of one of the new classrooms. So this is the classroom that's in that new addition. Pretty typical, looks very similar to what we, what was done at McGrath. Windows are a little bit different and larger, just to mimic the existing architecture on that 1930's building there. And then this one here is the renovations to the, one of the classrooms that are at the very south in that 1930's building. So right now that wall does come across right through there, so we are expanding that area there, increasing the recovery for students to store their stuff, increasing the overall footprint of those classrooms. And then this one here is one of the classrooms in that first and second grade kind of classroom pod at the very south side of the site. So new finishes in there, new electrical, redoing the casework that is on that corridor side seeing some of the, some casework in there. So making everything look equitable across the building both between, within Mark Twain but also what was also done at McGrath as well. And then this is a shot of the corridor. So you guys have a blue and green theme as you've kind of seen here. So that K through two would be green and then the third and fifth grade classrooms would be blue, which is a similar color scheme that was done at McGrath as well.
Real quick, I just want to say, I think the, the equity piece was a real driving piece to, to this entire design as we wanted, you know, obviously the students at Mark Twain to have the same educational opportunities as the students at McGrath. And I think you can see that in this design, that some of those key pieces, having the designated STEM space, having flexible learning space, having designated space for the interventionist. There's just really, we've been able to deliver, or Brandt and H T K have really been able to deliver a lot of those pieces that we felt were necessary for the education.
So then I think this might be the last one, but this would be that alternate for the gym finishes, going in with a sports floor that looks like a wood floor. It's not technically a wood floor, but it does have a similar appearance. There's some new kind of paintings, crucible panels, new stage curtain as well. I believe new gym equipment as well in that space. So that would be, I hope. So that's all I have for you guys. If you have any questions, please.
So what are we doing with the old library at Mark Twain? What will that be converted as to, is there anything?
Be the new mercenary classroom. So part of it is going to be our classroom and then a section of that is being used for overflow kind of admin space. We've got the workroom in there, the mailroom, staff restroom. We have the P E teacher's office also kind of backs up to that space as well. So they now have a dedicated office space and a kind of office storage space. While they currently have, it's getting expanded where it's just kind of storage space ready for it. So all that stuff that's on the stage here are making it pull in that storage room there. And then we have, let's see what else. A, I believe it's, yeah, a personal room as well as in that admin space, so.
What were the sizes of the classrooms before and what are we able to now make them, square footage wise?
There was a variety of sizes. I believe the two smallest ones were around 680 square feet. I think the smallest classrooms that we have now are actually these existing classrooms here that we're just refinishing. I believe those are around 820-ish square feet, which is equitable to the Spurby. No, 725. I think that's 725 square feet, which is equitable to the sizes that McGrath has, so.
Right.
And then just actually with the way kind of how the floor plans, the existing floor plates kind of worked out, most of the classrooms are actually a little bit bigger here than McGrath just because of the way things worked out. So they're not necessarily as ideal a size, so they are a little bit larger, but in the grand scheme of things, once you kind of fill out the spaces, they're equitable as far as we know, kind of use the space, so.
Were there any adjustments or changes that you had to make after going to planning and zoning?
No, the comments that they had were very minimal. They had some small kind of right away improvements that they had requested, which is actually on par with what we provided at McGrath. So I think they were just providing like the flashing beacons where they crosswalks there, some updated striping, some ADA ramps kind of on the other side of the street. So all just pretty minor things. And then there was another comments about the site lighting for the parking lot, so pretty minor things, so.
What about from like the water retention? I know we went through that with McGrath. Is that included here with the, the new building structure?
So there is a little bit, since the overall area of the site that we're disturbing is under the threshold that Mid-America Water Company requires, or Desert American Water requires. We don't have to do like the full-blown stormwater detention like what we did at McGrath. We are still providing some level of stormwater detention just to make up for the increase of impermeable area that we are adding to the site. So anything that we are adding to the site is being handled through an underground stormwater detention base, similar to what we did at McGrath, but just not quite to that same scale.
Can you, I mean, this is related to Carrie. So I'm going to put a plug in. All the, I mean, Navigates really helped with the McGrath projects. If you look on the website, it's current up through September, so the dashboard. But I think it'd be helpful maybe work with Tony to get this content out on the website under the phase two or wherever it makes sense. Because now that we have that plan, I just was perusing it. It needs to be touched again, particularly given we're getting close. So if you guys could do that, and I mean, I think this, you know, the renderings, we did that with McGrath, it would be really helpful.
That two-story foyer and open stairway, are there rules or guidelines about railings and things to keep kids from clinging themselves over a railing or something?
Yes, yeah, there were certain, something happened to me. So the standard is 42 inches if I remember off the top of my head. So those were all these.
I mean, I saw the rape, yeah, they, they look very, I mean, there, there's enough room for the seethroughs, they're not going to try and climb over them to look over the top.
Correct. And the meshing filled panels that we're doing here, since it's kind of a mesh panel with perforated holes, they're not as easy to climb such as like a wire rope style railing. So that is one thing that we try to avoid in school architectures. Things are easily climbable, so.
If I was, you know, in elementary school there with Jamie, he'd be saying, hoist me up so I can climb. No, I'm, I'm being facetious to some degree, but it just corrected me to wonder about that, you know?
Don't put a couch down there for someone to land on and we won't have a problem.
People thought about that before I did. I assume.
I guess when, so the teachers have all seen these latest renderings too and the staff at Mark Twain?
I don't know if all the teachers have seen the latest renderings. The last time we met with them, things were pretty similar to what we have now. There were a couple of requests that came out of our last meeting with them that we've since kind of changed and updated based on that last meeting. So floor plan wise, it's all pretty much the same. And I think they might not have seen all the kind of finished, pre-renderings, but they have seen the materials that we were proposing. So like the stained concrete, the carpets, L V T, the paints, that was all presented in the music room.
That's great. Yeah, and I, I think they look great, so it would be exciting or hopefully good information to share with the teachers and staff there just to keep everybody in the loop. But I think you're getting really close and it looks great. So the more we can share these pictures to keep people excited and looking forward to it, the better I'll be.
So just one kind of point of clarification, just maybe so I'm kind of on the same page. So we talked a little bit about the contingencies before. As I see this, I mean, this looks fantastic, right? But is there anything as we go out to bid that we might have to take back? So if we go out and communicate, this is what we're going to be doing, and then we have to start scaling back that scope, we have to reset expectations. So how close to, to reality, I guess, is this at this point in time before we go out and, and communicate to that, back to the public?
Yeah, I, I can speak to, you know, the, the two rounds of estimates that we've put together. So working with H T K, you know, there's basically two sets of design milestones before we get to a bid set. So we have a design development, or S D is a schematic design, design development. So each one of those, we've put an estimate to the, the physical paper, what was been presented. So after that D D, you know, we're, what would you say, 90, 95% closed? So then we, that's when we add on those escalations for just that time period between that estimate and when we got to bid, some of that unknown, you know, supply chain issues and pricing escalations, that's where we add that escalation factor. So another part of that is we also have taken the bid documents and we're doing like a constructability review or overview. The documents, again, maybe not do a full estimate, but if there's like some maybe major cost items that we weren't too aware of, we'll bring those up. So then on bid day, you know, we feel like we're pretty accurate. If we come in all of a sudden, bid day, we're just like, oh, like how these bids are really coming in, then we didn't, then we start to go through, you know, process of maybe some value engineering of how we can take some of the cost down.
Right. And I guess, you know, how many times have you had to go back and revise this as you guys have done this and other locations as well? Have you had to go back and revise and maybe de-scope some of the, the work? Because once this is communicated out to the public, I mean, it's, it's set in stone. It's, it's going to happen. And for us to have to go back and maybe pull something from the scope of the project to meet our budget or figure out where the funds come from, I, I guess I just, I want to make sure we don't get into that situation from a board standpoint, from a district standpoint, and set expectations.
No, and that, and that's, that's kind of why, you know, we as Navigates, you know, push to have those estimates along the way. It's not just, hey, we're going in with a square foot number and we'll see what happens. We actually put, you know, hard estimates with quantities and actual, we actually use pricing from real time at the time of the estimate. Because we have, you know, multiple projects, you know, all over and we'll actually use, you know, historical data from that time grid. That's why, like I said, every month or so, we have a factor of escalation to that.
I mean, we looked at it in the facilities and finance and one of the escalators was, I don't know where we were at, 20% or whatever that was?
Yeah, at some point we got.
So the point is, as they did it with the scope, that included that 20%, that was part of that contingency piece, not for the unknown, for pricing escalations.
Okay, okay.
Meaning best, I mean, we, we were pushing on the best the market they can predict at that time, so. And I think the point was, we had, in however many years, had never seen like the multiplier we had applied had never been seen before in years, meaning we were very conservative with scope and pricing.
And a part of the strategy of, we actually were going to go out to bid in September, we pushed that to November was, you know, we're just coming off the summer, you know, price escalation was kind of peak over the summer. Now we're starting to come back down a little bit, so the hope was by delaying another couple of months that maybe that'll, one, get more interest from the bear market, two, you know, help get some of that, that pricing escalation out of the mix.
So I, also as part of this, I think there's confidence that the bids will come in where we can deliver the major components of this project. The X factor that will ultimately depend on what comes in on bid day and ultimately what, you know, the board's decision is on that is all those alternates. So that's why I did think it was important that, you know, it really won't be until the board makes those decisions, the bids come in, and then we present it on February 1. So just, I think it's important for our community to understand that we are saying that the crux of this will happen and there will be some other decisions that are kind of contingent at this point. So this isn't, I wouldn't call this set in stone yet.
Right, that's what I, you know, once it's out there, it's, it's set in stone for the public. And if we're 90% confident, and then that's really what I'm trying to get at, how confident are we in it? And do the, are the pictures that we're seeing reflective of our level of confidence, right? If we come back and we get the bid, it's way too high, we have to, you know, cut a level off, obviously that changes a lot of things. And we certainly don't want to get, get to that point. I don't think we will, but.
The, the process has already evolved, so the, the original footprint was already adjusted and scaled because of market. So the point is, and then these alternates were in scope originally, but have been pulled out because of expectations around the budget and all of that. So if I look at those pictures, I fully expect that's what we're marching towards right now, but those pictures don't include those four alternates, right? That's why we're calling these.
Oh, okay.
These alternates are things that we've specifically said, we want to go get pricing on, but they are not currently in the scope. If pricing changes or whatever, or if we decide to absorb the cost, then we would go to those. That's why those are really important.
So that's what, you know, you say gym and stage renovations in the picture.
That picture is accurate, that's right.
So that's what I'm trying to, you know, compare the two, like what is an So that's what I'm trying to, you know, compare the two, like, what is an alternate? What do we need to put on the website if we do put it up, right? So we can make those decisions.
The gym picture did say alternate.
Yeah, but maybe even it does the alternate, but close. I think if we did put the gym picture out there, it needs to be separate as an alternate. So it'd be show, show for sure that that is not.
Yeah, that was the only, that's the only, that's the only recurring that.
I'm sorry, I did not see that.
Yeah, but Ryan, I agree with you that that would need to be pulled out separately to make it very clear that this is an alternate that we could consider depending on what the bids come back as.
Yes.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, okay.
And just one more thing to throw in, the windows. I know a lot of people were like, I can't believe we did all this stuff to the high school and we still need to replace windows. Not that that's an alternate, not that I want to add another alternate to it, but, you know, have we looked at our windows over there? Do we know what the life expectancy is of those windows? And is that something else we, at least could be useful to us down the road to show people if we have to go down the road for just some money for X, Y, and Z, that, that was stated by you guys at this time, that windows are something else that has a life expectancy of X, Y, and Z, and it will be something that needs to be replaced, and here was a dollar amount for it.
So Andy, we've worked with Andy, there's a five-year capital plan that also counts. So Andy's been right in the middle of this, because as we set up the financing facilities, we're doing, talking exactly about that, right? If we're not gonna go do something, DHVAC has an example, right? If we're not gonna go do that, Andy, how many years can we get out of this? And then we need to have our capital plan accounted for. So Andy's done a nice job of putting a five-year plan out there with a list of items. Well, knows that the high school is on that list of items as an example. But yeah, so I think as we review that, we feel good that his eyes have gone, have been on that, and it's in a plan now that says, we know if we don't do it here, he's prioritized what has to happen for whatever reason for us.
And we can budget for it.
Right.
That's the plan so that we have the money to do that moving forward.
Which goes back to, you know, the capital allocations, making sure, right, that we have enough that's set aside to go do that.
We do also have approximately half of the windows being replaced on the project as well. So all the old single pane windows that are in the nineteen fifty's and sixty-eight building, those are all being replaced with new insulated windows. The only ones that we kind of aren't, back in, I believe, it was two thousand and nine, a lot of the windows on the nineteen thirty-eight building was replaced, so those would be the only ones that we're not placing as of right now, so.
And Carrie, I will say, one of our learnings from the high school, middle school was exactly what we just talked through. Andy got, came on board right in the middle of all that, not at the front end with the plan and the five-year plan. So like, as we sat and go through it, I feel we're a lot better spot. Like it's, I feel like it was very intentional by people that know what they're doing, you know, how we've laid this out as we've been working.
Any other questions? Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
All right, so this month and next, I've invited our champions of our various strategic plan committees. Just a reminder, we have four strategic plan committees in the district. So tonight, we're going to hear first from our social emotional learning group, and then we'll hear from our academic achievement, and then at next month's meeting, we'll hear from our equity committee and our community engagement committee. Those are our four main branches. And so, yeah, I'll let you, Alex, you wanna take it away?
Good evening. We're gonna talk a little bit about our social emotional learning committee, and we'll start with the members of our committee on their next slide. And there's the members of our committee, as from, nineteen members on our committee. And just a quick note on that, and we'll talk about this towards the end. In last year's NTP, we worked with the teachers to have half of the teachers be part of our strategic committees as kind of the trade-off. We also agreed that we would be more often. But we found out the last several years is we had these really large groups, and we only met four times a year, and we felt like we could never kind of hit that ball movement down the field. So this is actually one of the larger committees. There's nineteen folks that are joining Dr. Noi and Dr. Lersch, and myself, representative though of the entire district. So we like, we like our little group, they're, they're a fun, fun bunch. Our committee goal is by the May of twenty twenty-four, the Brooklyn School District will address the social emotional health of our students through the systematic identification of needs through the use of an SCL screener and implementation of preventative and responsive practices and resources. So that's, it's a two-year plan. And the first kind of strategy that we have to tackle that is to kind of ground ourselves in the book called Emotional Poverty. It's by a, a well-renowned author, Dr. Ruby Payne. She's done a lot of work on just children of poverty in general. She's kind of gone down recently, down the S E L kind of road. Dr. Noi, I had the privilege of seeing her in person last spring, which kind of prompted our thinking about this committee and how powerful this book is. It's really rooted in brain research and how kids and adults really react in kind of emotional situations. So we felt that this was good work that all of our committee members needed, just kind of have a, kind of a handle on. And we also thought that if we could kind of work through a book study with our group, they could then go into each of their buildings and share really practical strategies. So, and so we kind of have something in place, we wanted to give our teachers some tools. And so that's, that was kind of the purpose behind the, the book study. So really, our, our plan was to kind of provide an overview of the book in our back-to-school meeting days. And then in the next few meetings, we're gonna, we have already dove into the first two chap, first three chapters, I think, three chapters. So that by the first semester, we'll have the first half of the book covered. And again, the, the task for the committee members is to go share some of these ideas and strategies with their faculty members. And then we'll do it all over again the second semester. Well, we'll unpack the entire book, we'll spread kind of the information out, and what was even kind of neat is we had some folks that are even, that, that, they're not even on the committee. Officer Pigs is one of them, and we had another, Mrs. Hood at the high school, French teacher, she saw this and she wanted to be, just learn more about it. So I think we have backed the right horse, so to speak. We got folks that are really interested in doing this work. So that's, that's our grounding work, and then that's kind of moved us into kind of more of some real practical steps and strategies that my partners in crime talk about. I think it's Dr. Noi.
So the next strategy that we're gonna focus on is to actually select an SCL, social emotional learning screener for all students K through twelve. Then we view, we've actually landed on the SABERS and MYSABERS screener. It's something that we have through FastBridge, which is, it's something that we use here in the District for Progress Monitoring. SABERS is actually an acronym, I want to get it right, is for Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavioral Risk Screener. So we're going to allow the committee to review that. There's a set of questions for the teacher, about twenty, and there's a set of questions for students, and that's the MYSABERS. And I have some, I kind of downloaded the, the types of questions that kids might have. I argue with others, and it's to what degree, what's the frequency, never, sometimes, often, almost always. I disrupt the class, I am respectful, I give good grades, I have trouble working alone, things like that. And the teacher screener, they will do one on each one of their children. Still the same frequency, but in social behavior, looking at often is the child arguing or disruptive behavior, impulsiveness, preparedness for instruction. So those very common things that we see in the classroom. We will develop an opt-out form. Parents don't have, children do not have to take the screener. It's good for us, the information would be good for us, but we, we won't force any child to do that. So we'll develop an opt-out form. The committee members will pilot the SABERS screener themselves, just on their, their personal students, to see how it works live, without the student portion being, being filled out. We'll review and analyze the reports for SABERS in February and develop a training document for the teachers at large, so that we can hit the ground running next year. Then we'll administer the SABERS in the fall of twenty twenty-three and in the spring, so pre and post assessment of that type. Now passing on to Andrew.
We got a question here from Carrie.
Will you be providing, when you ask the parents if they want to opt in or opt out, will they be able to see these questions? Will there be something even that you could show during conferences?
Basically, what you don't want is you don't want parents to prompt their children with some of these, but we can give them a sample of just like what I've read out to use some of those. I wouldn't give them this sheet in particular, but I know you.
I think we can hit on some of the themes.
Yes.
Mr. Dobson and all of us, we're trying to figure out how do we communicate that message? You'll see in some, some school districts have got themselves a little bit of perceived hot water because they're trying to extract some of this SCL information. This is not the screener that a lot of those districts are using. It's one that we actually looked at a few years ago. This is a little more, for lack of a better term, basic. It's, it's a little more condensed than some of these other screeners. But we feel like it really gives us good information. We've also found out there's a number of districts in St. Louis County that are using, using SABERS.
You know, as an educator, it's just a really good piece for us to get a read on how kids see themselves, because that will help us to provide some response to helping them feel better about themselves. You know, we're, we're all about just the general overall positive wellbeing of students, which, you know, we've seen a decline, and because of some of the restrictions with COVID, kids have been disconnected from their friends for so long. So we're trying to make sure we provide what's needed for our students to feel like they belong.
Well, and we have so much academic data, and I think we do a really good job of really looking at that and looking at tiers of interventions and providing that. But really, when we looked at the social emotional side, a lot of that was really more anecdotal than it was about really having any data to, to be able to ascertain and look and say, hey, we've got this percent of kids that are struggling with this issue, and what can we do to provide some help for those kiddos?
And that's what this would, this would help us, it would give us some sort of percentile of students who are dealing with certain social emotional issues.
It's like a five-minute thing, it's a half-a-day thing?
No, it's about, yeah, a couple of minutes for a kid because.
It's not like the testing per se.
This is it. It's about twenty items for each of the teacher and the child.
So does the, the teacher fill one out for each student as well to kind of compare the two, like the student say, I never distract anybody in class, but the teacher might feel something totally different, right?
And, you know, and when you get to the older grades, kids might behave one way and one kind of ways.
Yeah, right.
Another.
I had some screener questions. So for kindergartners, you know, my daughter can't read, and she's in kindergarten, so is it like the teacher asking questions and they're hitting a smiley face or an angry face, or how exactly are the?
It starts at secondary.
Okay, so, and I'll follow up with a different one on that. So then, you know, in the fall, the teachers don't know the kids all that well. And so I, I'm not saying that they don't know the kids just from historical, they know the kids as they come out of school. Would we consider having for the fall test that you're actually using the last year's teacher to assess the kid? Just because two weeks in, you know, a kid, I'd be lying, you know, my son's having a little bit of trouble this year. So the start of the school year is always a little bit rough, so if the teacher gives him an assessment, three weeks into school, he, you know, he's different than the kid he was at the end of the prior year. And I'm just wondering, how, how effective is that gonna be? I, I'm not really asking for an answer, I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's a very good point. We have ways of, you know, with any assessment, really, teachers do weigh for some of them a little ways in to the school year to get to know the kids, especially kids that are, you know, we have new kids coming in and everything. So we give a, a big battery of academic assessments at the beginning of the year. Something like this I could see moving further into like October, you know, when kids have settled in and we know them better, and everybody's kind of at ease.
And this is something we're gonna continue to do every year. So like the beginning, we kind of just gotta pull the Band-Aid off and get started, but then they'll have a, each kid will have a baseline move forward. So then how will we try to get the kindergarten and first graders who, you know?
I could see teachers actually filling this out for kindergartners and first graders, and I don't know if they can enter it into the program, but it's good information to sit and dialogue with, with when we have our PLCs, just to talk about the groups of kids that we see. You know, we, we try to meet every kid where they are, with what they need, but I know that a kindergartner couldn't take this, so we would probably use this data more as an anecdotal piece.
I'm just, you know, I see it's a K through twelve, I just want to make sure, you know, like, I don't want the kindergartners in first grade, because I believe this is a really important thing for these kids, especially coming out of COVID, and they still don't even know how to behave in society, when these kindergartners, first graders come in to like, that we can set them up and not wait till they get to second grade and be like, oh, by the way, I wish we would have known, you need these extra things.
Yeah, you know, just thinking about that off the top of my head, we also have resources like our district social worker and our counselors who can get together and we can, we can put a problem solving meeting together to help kids with specific needs at those very, very younger grades. So we can still use that data and just have a different kind of meeting talking about the kids.
Thank you.
I, I like this idea too of the students rating themselves, because I feel like we, we do that when we take our kids to the, their doctor every year, and they have to fill out a screener as they get older, and it's really important to get their perspective on how they're doing. So I, I really like that part.
Could you even in the younger age of kindergarten first, have parents be filling this out? The reason I ask that is, I remember in kindergarten, having sheets at home and being asked, how can, you know, what, tell us about your child. And we wrote a thing about our child, and, you know, how could we help the teacher understand our child more, blah, 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 you know? And I think it was very helpful, you know, because I had a daughter who, you know, was basically the teacher at her preschool, and they would say they didn't need a sub because she would basically run the class. Well, that was something that some teachers loved, some teachers didn't love, so it was a good tool to give the kindergarten teacher. Is this something that you could see them, you know, maybe including into that packet to some extent? Because like you said, a kindergartner and a first grader can't answer those questions.
Yeah, it's a really good point. I mean, that's something we can, we can utilize and talk about.
All right, good evening, everybody. Actually, I want to start by thanking you all for supporting this work in particular. It's always been important that we make sure that we're addressing all the social emotional needs of all of our students K through, pre-K through twelve, and it's really more important now than ever before, so, so thank you. So in addition to the book study and the learning that we're doing as a strategic plan committee, and in addition to the, to the learning that we'll do around the students in our classroom, we also want to actively teach the types of, of skills that will benefit students currently and for the rest of their lives. And so we are looking currently at implementing some SCL curriculum throughout the schools. And so we spent much of last year, the start of this year, looking at a number of different curricula that are out there currently. There are three that we really landed on that we feel like meet our needs, the seven mindsets, second steps, and fly five. And so we have asked teachers and teachers throughout, throughout each level, at the elementary schools, at the middle school, at the high school, have agreed to pilot those curricula, starting at the beginning of this year through first semester, and as you'll see in the first part, second semester this year, in order to get an idea, get a feel, each one of them, of course. Each one of them, of course, they have similarities, but there are some nuances and some differences between them that we really want to understand. Before second semester, we really started looking at presentations from the vendors, getting feedback from those teachers and culminating hopefully with some recommendations to you all at the end of February when we look at at some of this curriculum. It's interesting to look at these at these different programs. As I said, they all have some similarities, of course. But some look like they're a little more elementary, some look like they're designed for some of the older kids. And that's one of the really important things that we're looking at. Because I think that, you know, if you present elementary students with a curriculum that's designed for secondary students, there's one set of problems. If you present our our older students, our secondary, middle and high school students with the the cartoony stuff that's really great with elementary kids, we get some eye rolling that that's not always indicative of what we want. So part of what we're looking at is making sure that that it's appropriate for the levels and it's something that's going to resonate with kids. It's all standards based. There are standards for this type of work. A lot of it is is tied in with, and and this is aligned with, the Missouri Comprehensive School Counseling Program curriculum, which is some some really good work out of DESI that helps guide not only what our guidance counselors are doing, but also but also this type of work. And as I said, making sure that it's appropriate for the level of students. So we're excited about it. We're excited to start getting feedback from our teachers who are who are piloting it. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to address it.
You know, and another key consideration is we've looked at this need and the committee is considering this. And that's why we're having teachers pilot these different programs. Is we really, as much as possible, we don't want it to be something additional on our teachers' plate. We know they already have a lot that they're doing. So we really wanted a a curriculum that as much as possible is really plug and play, you know, that have the ability to to have a lesson, a short lesson provided to them, discussion questions, perhaps some videos and and things of that nature and still still do the standard. So we're going to be interested to hear back from that. But, you know, that's that's been one of our key considerations is how can we meet this need without, you know, a full-blown new initiative for our teachers?
So that in theory, the Saber screener then translates into one of these curriculums that you guys will know access to take based on?
It'll give us, yeah, a lot of these curricula, really all three of them, have just a whole host of different themes. And the Sabers will help us inform, you know, which themes we might want to concentrate on. And, you know, vice versa. I think over time, hopefully, the curriculum will help will help increase the the sense of belonging that the Sabers would indicate students have.
So do other districts that are, I don't know, are there any other districts that are doing this or using any of these programs? And are they having their teachers do it? Or do they have a set person hired to go around and do this at the different levels? I think it's a great thing. I just think that, and I don't know how to say this, but I don't mean this in a disrespectful respectful way. My parents were teachers and they taught science, math, English, and whatever. This is a whole new ball of wax that we're dealing with. And I personally think, my parents were psychiatrists, psychologists. They didn't deal with mental health, social emotional, all that. Is this really going to be, are we going to really be getting everything from this by asking our teachers to integrate it into their classroom? Or is if we're going to do this and we're going to do it right, is this something that we need to be looking at someone specifically being hired in the district to go from K through 12? Or is it something that our counselors can do? I think our counselors have a lot going on as well. So I'm not trying to say hire, hire, hire. But I am saying that we've heard, and I think it's great that we're looking into this. But I think I'd like that that additional piece to be investigated and brought back to us on how are other districts using it across the United States? Are they looking at, or do they have one particular person doing it, so on and so forth?
I think it's a, well, my first statement would be we'll take as many mental health professionals as you have support as having because because there's a great need and and all the support. And we have amazing, amazing counselors, social workers. And and actually, I think that all of our teachers are very in tune with the social emotional needs of our students. I think part of this goes back to what Dr. Ling was saying about there is a sort of a plug and play element to this where it doesn't take necessarily a a lot of background in in social emotional wellness. You don't need to be a psychologist or therapist or psychiatrist to to be able to introduce these themes and have these conversations. It's 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 pretty well packaged to begin with. The second, you know, in the second place, again, I do feel like our teachers are are pretty well versed in what the needs of our students are at all the various levels. But most importantly in my mind, and again, I I think these are all really good conversations to have and and really good things for our committee to to talk about. In my experience, these types of conversations are most relevant to students when students are having them with people with whom they're already connected. And I think that 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 student-teacher relationship is actually one of the one of the key leverage points when we look at delivering this kind of information. I think that no wonder when you bring somebody in from the outside, while they might have, you know, a certain expertise that would lend itself to this, they might not necessarily have that that close personal connection that our that our teachers strive to have. And I think most of most of the time do have the students. So again, that's off the top of my head. But after having given this a lot of thought, you know, obviously, over the last couple of weeks as we've been doing this work, the last couple of years as we've been figuring out where our kids are and what their needs are socially, emotionally. And then, you know, I don't, I also don't want to say that the social emotional conversations that we're having now are also because of the pandemic or because of, you know, all of the the stresses and stressors that are in our kids' lives. They've had this for for the almost 30 years that I've been working with middle school students. And and I think that my colleagues at pre-K elementary and high school would say the same. So there's a great need and and, you know, again, I think these are really good conversations to have in terms of of the delivery. And if it is our teachers that that are delivering this curriculum, making sure that they're comfortable with it. So, yeah, a lot of a lot of tentacles to that question.
The teacher list, the volunteer list, has 14 elementary teachers, one high school, and like four middle school. Was it by design or by volunteer? Or were you guys intentionally trying to, you know, like, I'm just wondering how that makeup came to be?
Yeah, we tried to give teachers, we give teachers choice. And we, unless it was completely unbalanced, yeah, we would have liked to have more high school representation on this particular committee. But I've already talked to Dr. Johnson and he's already kind of rallied his troops that aren't on the committee. I mentioned Mrs. Hood, the French teacher. It was really to honor the teacher's first choice in selecting these committees is how it kind of made it.
Yes.
I'm trying to articulate, figure out a question or articulate to ask something that I don't understand. I'm not sure what the question is. So I was going to ask this. You said your teachers know the students well and know their, what what kind of things are we expecting to learn from these assessments that we don't already know about the kids? Given that we have small classrooms and they do know each other very well? And does that make any sense?
It does. I think, you know, and it it goes back to a lot of like what Cindy was talking about in terms of there's there's really two parts to this. One is how we see students. A a really important key that we're missing sometimes, and I think this is pre-K through 12, is that what a student presents outwardly may or may not accurately reflect what's going on inside. We see students, you know, you you picture a column C with a whole lot of current underneath. I think that really accurately describes some of our students. I also think that there are times at the opposite of this room where a student might present with with all sorts of concerns. And then when we really dig down, that student really has some some very deep and appropriate, age-appropriate types of of emotional connections. So, you know, a a big part of it is seeing if what we think we're seeing is accurate related to what's going on in in a student's mind.
So then the curriculum, is that is the idea, then what do you do about, I guess? Is that what that?
That's part of it.
We've been doing things about these things, you know, since we're getting time, obviously. But now we're going to do it better?
There's two parts to that. First of all, the the curriculum is really generalized. And so, you know, all of the things that you would expect to see in a in a social emotional learning curriculum are present in these. It's about getting along. There are self-esteem components. There are, you know, how to interact in in healthy and friendly ways with others. It it's all of those types of themes that you would expect to see. And it's fairly broad and and pretty generalized. It would be something that would be appropriate for the entire school population. That is also going to be helpful for students who might identify as having more specific needs through the Sabers. But then also through the Sabers, there are maybe, you know, deeper or or more specific interventions that we might consider based on what we learned from from those reflections.
Alex said that there were other tests or Sabers. Is that a test or an evaluation?
An evaluation.
Other ones that other school districts have gotten in trouble with? And for what reasons were they getting in trouble with those?
The perception was that they were, the the surveys were getting into more personal information than parents were feeling comfortable with. I think when, I mean, Cindy and I looked at it, the the specific assessment is called Panorama. And several districts in the region across the state, across the country, use Panorama. Personally, I I, we loved it. But some folks look at it that it was digging into too personal of questions.
Like their political affiliation, sexual orientation, those sorts of questions, questions about the family.
It got some national attention.
So the Sabers is a, it's 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 much shorter and, but I, yet it'll yield, I think, really good information for our for our teachers.
I think that was a great question and Andrew did a great job of responding to it. But I would also add on that in terms of the curriculum, you know, when we think back, you know, how conscientiously or or consistently, I should say, are we teaching these social emotional skills to kids? If we think back historically, yeah, you'd have the counselors come in and they do some lessons and it's kind of teacher dependent, probably some do it more than others. But we're seeing a real need with a lot of students nowadays that they are lacking some of these necessary social skills. And they need to have it concretely talked to them, same as you teach a math or reading or something else. So I think this is what it would offer us to be able to say, hey, consistently, you know, might be 10 minutes a day, you know, we're not talking hours and hours of of social emotional work. But that you're teaching these kids the actual skills that they're going to need to coexist and get along with.
It's a structured curriculum that kind of walks them through.
Couple more questions. Does Ms. Kenobi still do the teachings that McGrath actually used to do when our kids were in elementary on different topics? And are we going to be teaching this to the class? Say Suzie really doesn't need this and hasn't been given this evaluation. Are we going to be making sure that it's to the whole class and we're not pulling these six kids out and they're getting taught because teachers thought that they were the ones that should have this done?
No, it's a whole class group.
It's a whole class. And then can we see before everything is approved? Because I'm kind of listening to our attorney over here and then hearing what Alex is saying.
I'm not your attorney.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying your your legal background, your accent, whatever, whatever. You know what I meant. So can we look at these as well? Because I think, you know, if we're going to be approving them, I'd really like to see every single question that the parents are going to be, the kids are going to be asked just, you know, because of that particular program being made national.
For clarification, are you talking about the screener or the curriculum?
The screener questions. I know you you read a couple to us, but just so we can, you know, know what they're asking. And then do we do any kind of teachings like they did elementary school? Nothing against Mark Twain, I just didn't go there. At the middle school level? You know, I think Dr. Lane like really hit on a piece right here. Like, there's a lot of things right now that kids are dealing with, whether it's bowling, whether it's being made fun of, you know, just different things right now. Are we doing that as we speak? And is there a way to bring that in until we get this up and running?
They obviously use family and advisory for all those pieces. This would just.
And Bashi goes into classrooms at every grade level throughout the year. It's part of the Missouri Guidance Program. And so there are, there are standards, just as there are standards in in every core elective area. There are guidance standards in the state of Missouri as well. And so Mrs. Bashi, throughout the middle school, the counselors at the high school all go into classes to to teach those lessons. And again, to your point earlier, we also have outside agencies and outside experts come in and teach those lessons to students as well on a variety of topics all aligned with those Missouri guidance standards.
Anything else for this committee? Thank you all.
Thank you.
So while the next group comes up, I should have, I should have prefaced this by just talking a little bit about the alignment and how the strategic planning boards work. So as the board knows, my goals are directly tied to the goals of the strategic plan committees. And then in addition to that, so as you see, we have on a rotating year basis, every staff member in the district serves on one of the strategic plan committees. And then the way it aligns from there is the principal goals. And I meet with them and they go over those. The principals all have two to three goals, which tie directly into one of the four main areas. And then finally, the last piece in that is our teachers all have their goal or goals that tie into those as well. So we take a look and have a lot of conversations about, you know, what's appropriate to be done at the district level. For instance, a great example, picking a screener is obviously not a building-level decision. So that one needed to go with the strategic plan committee. But there can be opportunities that the buildings are tying into it to say, well, we can research a tier-two social emotional intervention in the meantime, and we'll pilot that. Or we'll pilot some of these SEL curricula. And so that's how the building can tie in. So it's just so you guys get, I know you have a good idea of it, to get an idea of how that aligns all the way throughout the system. And then you have the professional development committee sitting over here. They know everyone's goals. And then their job is to meet and talk about how can we support those groups and those goals with professional development throughout the year? All right, next up. Next up, well, I made Alex be on every one of these committees.
She didn't get to choose.
All right, so we're going to talk now, our next committee is the Academic Achievement Committee that Carol and I get to lead. This is a smaller group, it's about 10 folks or so that, again, to his question earlier, again, this is a, we want people to be passionate and, you know, we want you to. again, this is, we want people to be passionate and, you know, we don't want it as assigned to a committee that they don't really care about. So we have 10 very invested people. We already had our first meeting and we had to, we had to shut it down at five o'clock because they were still going and we made a commitment to end on time. So it's a, it's a really good group. And I will read you this committee's goal again, this is a two-year goal. By the, by May of 2024, the Brentwood School District will increase the percentile of students demonstrating proficiency and growth on grade level standards by implementing student success plans for all students. And so before I kind of go into our strategies, really we focused right there, what we're looking at on that goal is what stands out to me in our committee, what stood out was we need to place an emphasis on this idea of grade level standards, and we need to look at this idea of student success plans. So oddly enough, our first goal was to really talk about standards. And where we landed was this idea of DESI's priority standards. And really, we've been talking about priority standards for DESI for the last couple of years, but I think that's all we've done, to be super honest. It's time that we actually get not only serious about what these standards are, but how do we ensure that we're covering all of these priority standards with fidelity? Just as a little backup, DESI developed these priority standards really kind of as the onset of COVID came on. There was, you may have heard of like academic learning loss and learning loss in general with COVID. And so what DESI said in the four core areas of math, ELA, science, and social studies, we need to find out what do kids gotta, gotta, gotta have. And they probably use better terms than that, but it was essentially what are the most important standards out of everything that we teach in each of those four content areas? And they called them the priority standards. It's a pretty lengthy list and I can share those with you if you'd like to see them. But that's where, you know, we decided to focus on that because what we also know is that the MAP test for the foreseeable future, 80 to 90% of the content on the MAP test is going to be connected to these priority standards. And if our, if our district goal is to show an increase on those standards, and that's one of the measures that we have is the MAP test and the EOCs, it made sense to me to kind of lead this committee into focusing on priority standards. So that's kind of the backstory on that. How are we going to do, you know, what are we going to do and how are we going to unpack it? Here's kind of what we have already in mind. So our early childhood friends have already kind of started this work. There's separate milestones for early learning standards. And so Kristin and her group have already started unpacking those at the early childhood side. What we did at our first meeting with our K-12 group was to introduce and start to unpack those priority standards. And then what we want to do throughout the course of this year is connect those priority standards with our standards-based rating could affect kind of what we put on our report cards. We want to make sure that our interventionists are really looking at those priority standards and working with priority standards. It doesn't make sense for our interventionists to work on skills that may not be deemed as important. So we're going to, as we have PLC meetings and we look at what kids, which kids need interventions, we're also going to make sure that the interventions that they're receiving kind of connect to this idea of priority standards. We want to make, we would like to, I don't know if we can assure, but what we would like to is somehow put these in the hand, put these standards in the hands of teachers either through the tools that we have. We use Embark to hold our curriculum. We use Infant in Canvas as our student information system, but there is a kind of a curricular arm, and Canvas may be an option. The whole idea here is that we have some tools already at our disposal that we would like to use to continuously put this information in front of teachers. We want to develop a process to make sure that these standards have been taught. That's a technical term, is vertical alignment, so that we can look at K through 12. What are these priority standards? How do we make sure that they were actually taught? That was one of the comments that our committee had was that we know what the standards are, but I'm always not so sure that they were really covered to the extent that they needed to be in the previous grade. So we thought that was a really good point to come up with a process to ensure fidelity of those standards. Also want to evaluate assessment tools to ensure consistency with the priority standards. So, you know, what comes to mind immediately is our dyslexia screen with FastBridge, NWEA, of course MAP and EOC. And so that's, that's one of my homework assignments is to kind of draw some correlations between all of those and DESI's priority standards. And then the last piece of that, I mentioned that these priority standards have already been identified by DESI in math, ELA, science, and social studies. We actually have, there was some comments about our non-core content areas, PE, health, practical arts, fine arts. Could those folks, they know their curriculum like the back of their hand, could they contribute like a Brentwood-designed list of priority standards? So to that end, that's actually the group that will be writing the curriculum at the end of this year and into next year. So it's actually perfect timing that we can actually work with those folks. And one of their tasks is going to be, not only are they, you know, going to realign their current curriculum, but as they're doing that, we ask them to identify some key priority standards. It'll only be for us, for Brentwood, because DESI hasn't identified those. But I think again, it puts a level of emphasis on some really key standards. You know, one of the researchers that we all listened to is Robert Marzano. And he said, boy, kids have got to have a viable and guaranteed curriculum. And honestly, that's what this whole idea of priority standards is all about. And it's not just those four core areas, it's all the other areas that we teach kids. What do we say in Brentwood that every kid is going to get? And that's, that's kind of our, that's step one of this committee's task.
How does this fit? I mean, because I went out this morning for refresh. I mean, the math standards is 27 pages of Excel, right? But how is this, this is another standard that we're going to use to measure students' growth proficiency? We've got MAP testing, right, that the state statute requires? We've got NWEA testing, and now we've got this. Do we, and how are we even going to measure this, right? So my concern is, right, these standards, and we've said, I've been told, we measure proficiency with MAP scores and NWEA. Now I'm, I think I'm hearing we're going to be told we're going to do this. It seems a lot of different things, all trying to measure proficiency.
Well, I mean, so the priority standards are already existing standards within that 27 pages.
Yes.
And actually, when we get our MAP results and our EOC results, there's a column that says, is this standard a priority standard, yes or no? So we're actually able to zero in using MAP and EOC on that. My task that I told you many hours ago is look at NWEA and specifically look at how does that assessment attack those priorities?
Right, because MAP is state statute, DESI is state organization, saying, all right, they're going to tie those together. MAP, we get results once a year, it's hard to really much progress. NWEA, I mean, it's just, we've talked about this before, it's a lot, right? Like it's, and it's more for us, like how can it really be actionable, right? If we're looking at 10 different things that are really, although maybe interrelated, I just, I don't, I'm not seeing it, right?
Well, I think, to me, this is more about simplifying. It's, okay, you've got your, you know, X amount of pages of standards, which of course we want our teachers to be familiar with, and they are. But ultimately, this is saying and holding ourselves accountable to say that every kid that leaves second grade is going to be able to do A, B, and C. And that's obviously our job's not done then, but we're saying that absolutely, and we're going to take a hard look and be like, okay, well, that needs to be taught for this much time in first grade, this much, you know, kindergarten needs to hit it this way, first grade needs to hit it this way, and then they'll wrap it up in second grade. And we're going to know whether or not those kids can do these key essential standards that every second grader leaving second grade should be able to do, so.
I guess my question is, how are we going to know that? Through a MAP test, through an NWEA test, or through another test? Like I.
Oh, I don't think it's, I think it's just the teachers. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's that last, second to last bullet, it's really a figure. That's the, that's the whole sheet match.
This is not an additional assessment. I think that's like.
Well, so it's, that's fine, that's good. But I'm still saying, if I'm going to go measure it, what am I going to measure it with, right? I really think NWEA, which we've been told is really where we're going to measure proficiency, right? If we can't map these standards to that, to, how are we going to assess it, right? Because then I'd say, let's get rid of NWEA, right? If we're going to ask the teachers to assess it, then let's get rid of that other tool, right? I'm just, what I'm, I'm very sensitive to is, I love this idea and I went through and looked at these, they're great, right? But MAP test is going to say something, NWEA says something else, right? So how are we, if you give me 10 standards, right, that we're going to say every second grader is going to do these, are we using the NWEA to evaluate that? Or we're going to use the second grade teacher? You know what I mean? That's what I'm after. Because I'd say then, it should be one or the other, right? Because all for this, but tell me how we're going to measure it, right? And then we're going to know, because I don't know, should I go look at the NWEA scores? Like you've been doing a nice job showing us that? Should I look at that to see whether we're demonstrating proficiency or growth? Right, that's what I'm after. Because I just, I love the idea, but I don't know how to measure it. And then how can you quickly show us that, yep, Jamie's kid, you know, he grew?
The standards just have my head spinning. I mean, I listen to Jamie and he's talking about this and he's talking about this. I just, when we were growing up, wasn't it like in kindergarten, you had to teach this? Like, I don't know if they had standards back in the day. But then like if, there were standards, but there weren't all these different standards, you know, trying to share data. And then, and then if we're saying that a kid in kindergarten needs to have these standards, if they don't have standards, is there still in schools now that that kid doesn't go into first grade? Are we holding those standards accountable? And if those standards aren't met, are we keeping kids back? Because I have had conversations with parents back in the day when my kids were in elementary school, and parents would want to hold their kids back. And then schools would say, no, you can't hold them back. They'll get caught up, they'll get there, whatever. So all these standards and all this stuff can be great, but are we really following them? And will we, as a district, follow through and hold a kid back and explain to a parent or do what's in the best interest of the kids if it's necessary?
That's a whole nother topic, and I can't say I'm a big part of retention. I think that's when what you're talking about gets us into this idea of our interventionists and really this idea of that multi-tiered system of supports that I've been kind of sharing with you guys. That's, that's how we start to close some of those gaps. You know, because a child does not meet all of those standards, I don't know that that's a reason to hold them back. I think it's a reason to find ways to support that kid, whether it's through our interventionists, additional tutoring, or whatever might be at the secondary level. Again, I'm probably speaking outside of my lane, but I don't know that that, I don't know that retention is directly connected to this. It is directly connected though to if we're able to realign our report card, our standards-based reporting, that we actually say, this is what kids ought to have. Well, it ought to be, if we're saying it's these priority standards, we may need to tweak what that report card looks like.
That's where I was going to go with it to Jamie's initial question in terms of how are we tracking it? And I think the answer, and well, with your committee, Alex, I know you guys were looking deeper into this, is it a combination of MAP and NWEA? What's the alignment? But then also, how are we communicating that home to the parents? And that certainly could be the report cards in terms of, hey, here's where your, here's where your child ended up on this priority standard. So I think that's a great point.
And I may just speak a little bit to that too, Ms. Tausell. I think the work from this committee is partly to prevent some of that retention piece as well, because as we go to the next action step, it leads us into individualized student success plans, which can help us to prevent some of those, I'm, I'm sorry, some of those areas where students might need to be retained. So hopefully, as we get into the second step, that really kind of comes on that a little bit. So one thing that we found out that's really exciting is that, like Alex said, the BECC is already starting this process of writing those individualized student goals, so that whenever students are coming to us in kindergarten, we have a broader area of understanding of where it is that kind of they're lying in the academic realms. Their work right now, currently, they've begun the goal process, and they will be revisiting this in January to write specific intervention strategies to put into place. So again, to try to meet those kiddos where they're at, whenever they're, they're coming into elementary, and giving our teachers a broader idea of what we can put into place right away with them. And then if I may, going into January with our work, we're going to start looking at researching the, what is the specific student success plan did? What is, what are our neighboring schools looking at doing? What is the research behind it? How do we put these together, so? And then be able to really define what those plans are in tier one, two, and, you know, our tier three instruction. So for example, with Mark Twain, we're writing goals right now, we've gone and walked in important ways. And those are goals that our students work with their teachers to kind of identify an area that they want to improve on, and then they put strategy in place. So we're already starting to do that work. And what we'll be doing is there'll be more of a process to broaden that success plan to something that's more designed, you know, bigger framework for our, for our teachers to understand.
Yeah.
I'm getting it out, right? Sorry.
And right now, we're not real sure what that form is going to look like. You know, what we tried to share with our teachers, I think they got a little nervous when we said, you know, I think they were thinking every child's going to have an IEP.
Right.
Every child's not going to have an IEP, Dr. Houskethorne. Unless you would like to service every child here in the district. It's not that comprehensive. As a matter of fact, when our PLC teams meet, and, you know, I'm just going to throw out a number, say 75% of our kiddos are on grade level, that may, that may very well be a student success plan. What, you know, what we might need to get, what we need to get more detailed is what our interventionists are doing. And that's kind of that MTSS process that I was talking about earlier. So all of that to be said, we're not real sure what that, literally what that form is going to look like. I, you know, when I go back to and say, 75% of our kids are doing, wow, well, we can't be content with that, right? I mean, what can we do to be challenging our students? So that's, that's all, these are all little nuances that I think, you know, when we go back to our mission statement of we see every child individually, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think inherently, and Alex and I, you and I have had a lot of those conversations, it's also about having a running record, if you will. So we have a student, you know, coming in and then from year to year in terms of, you know, what interventions or enrichment activities have worked with that child, where they're at on, you know, and we're tracking all this data anyway, where are they at on various assessments, and then not losing that as we go year to year. But you're right, it's all about really getting down into details on that, on every single student.
I'm kind of curious why you guys decided to start at the Early Childhood Center and not, you know, high school to write student individual student goals?
They've been doing MBEons, and that's part of the project construct philosophy. And I'd ask Kristin, we wanted this also to be representative of our entire district. And I think in previous iterations and previous places I've worked, we've never included our early childhood school. And so I asked Kristin, if there's anything that's going on at the Early Childhood Center, if it's in any of these four buckets, please insert your work. So it just so happened that, and I said, tell me more about this, because this is something that they have been doing since it was over at the high school. And that's, I remember when my children went to the Child Development Center in St. Charles County, I met with their teachers at the beginning of the year, and we did almost have an IEP for every one of my kiddos, my own children. And so that's not an uncommon practice in early childhood. I thought it was worth mentioning.
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's the genesis of that.
So just to finish it off, so what we're looking at then for our long-range plan, after we kind of really narrow in on what are we going to look at for our tier one, two, and three framework and developing the success plans, we'll put together a piece that we can communicate out to teachers, so that they know what it is that, you know, we'll be expecting and what we'll be looking at. That implementation process, we're hoping to be able to begin as we get back into school in the 2023 school year. So spending the next year of working through the process and developing plans, teachers and administrators being together to benchmark along the way, monitor the data, and then evaluate towards the end of the 2024 school year and just take a look at what amazing growth our students impact with these individual plans.
I have an off-the-wall question possibly with the, we have all the kids at the elementary level changing schools next year, and that's going to be quite a disruption for the Mark Twain kids. And then, you know, the McGrath kids are going into a brand-new building, and are we concerned at all with how this is going to impact some of this stuff that we're doing here, trying to, you know? They're all in an uncomfortable environment, a new environment, learning, you know?
I think the operation of school is still going to, the facility and the surroundings might be different, but the machinations of what we do with kids and what we do with teachers and our meetings with professional learning communities, that, that's when all of this work takes place, and I don't see us deviating from that.
I was saying, looking more at like the Mark Twain teachers that are used to this, they have this thing. this, they have this thing set up, and then they're, you know, the McGrath teachers are getting to set up their classroom, not that the Mark Twain won't when they come over, but McGrath, they're setting up their classrooms, the teachers are gonna come in, it's gonna be set up however they want. And then we're gonna be coming over and bringing the Mark Twain teachers over and saying, well, here's this classroom for you, you know, we'll do our best to get it set up. I'm just wondering how the teachers are, you know, I mean, this is probably a bigger scope issue, I'm just kind of looking at this, saying, we're measuring success of these people, and we're gonna be potentially having some disruptions.
Dr. Lee and I talked that, you know, we get the teachers, you know, about a week before school starts, and normally, we, yeah, we are, we keep them busy, I mean, we, we coach them up and we train them up. We may need to kind of pump the brakes on that and give our elementary folks some time just to do what you're talking about, Keith, is getting them acclimated to their new space.
Yeah, we're gonna support that as much as possible with the move and giving them time and their schedule, and I'll give you guys some more details on that as we get closer.
It's a great, it's a great, it's simple things like, I need to go make copies of something, and then it's taking five extra minutes to go do stuff that should take you two seconds.
I think once we're there, this stuff is, this is just the daily, or the, this is, this is part of the task that we do with teachers, the work that we do with teachers.
And it's the beauty of our teachers and everyone who works with them, because they already are working to meet our kids' needs, not their, you know, just specifically building our classrooms, it's just.
Anything else for Alex or Carol?
Thank you all.
I appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Just when you thought.
This one, please.
All right, surplus textbooks.
Okay, so as we purchased new math textbooks, what we ended up with on the, that's sellable in the resale market are three of the higher leveled math books that, you know, they're, they're gently used, they're five years old, but there's still a market for that, and at least on the titles that I have listed here, it's calculus, college algebra, and pre-calculus. Before I can, before we can actually go out and put those out for sale, the school point has to declare a surplus. So, I just wanted you to know I did just a little preliminary work to see, is there even a market for this? I've done it with you guys in the past on surplus stuff, and it just ended up, we couldn't sell. So I didn't want to waste anyone's time, but there is a market for these three tiles specifically. It's not a king's ransom, but it's, you know, maybe twenty or thirty dollars a textbook. And there's, you know, we have forty, I mean, we have almost a hundred books that we could sell on the secondary market, but for that they have to be declared a surplus.
I move that we declare the textbooks as outlined as surplus. Second.
Discussion?
I said, sorry, I was just gonna ask if the monies were, we use general money to acquire them or grant money, and that we have to be concerned about disposing of surplus property with these in grant funds, or, you know?
This was, this was text, this was curriculum money, general.
No, I mean, I assumed that, I just wanted to make sure.
Quick question, so, the calculus, was this for AP calculus?
Yeah, we refreshed, that was the last spring, we refreshed all these books. I mean, they're, they're usable, but, I mean, that's the beauty of our district, because every five years we get to put new titles or, you know, new books for these kiddos.
The only reason I was asking that is because I was told that we did not order calculus, AP calculus books, that that somehow slipped through the cracks. So none of the AP calculus kids have books yet? And so, I just was wondering if we could have used these, because right now, the teacher had to, I guess, rewrite a curriculum, just because like my daughter's getting tutoring, and so her tutor asked for a book, and she said we don't have books because they weren't ordered. And so, they're ordered now, but they don't know when they're gonna get in. So just curious, could we be using them right now?
Yeah, I'll need to look into that. I mean, there was, I will, there was like, on the, that week before, teachers came back, Jerry Schmidt had come to me and said, you may have missed out on ordering those books, so I flew over there, between the building secretary, the teacher, and Schmidt, we ordered them, I thought.
Because they, they do not have books, and Schmidt sat here and said how he really believed in books for those courses, and we have kids with no books taking AP calculus.
All right, I'll dig into that.
So, I wanna make sure before we get rid of them, that if we don't have them, and maybe what she's writing and what she's teaching, this isn't gonna align with it right now, but it was kind of embarrassing when we didn't have a book to take to the tutoring.
All right, we'll get an answer on that.
Okay, anything else on the surplus books for questions for Alex? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Last thing on superintendent report, I'm looking for approval of our annual MSBA service agreement. This is where our policies are reviewed by MSBA.
I move that we approve the signing of the annual service agreement with MSBA. Second.
Discussion?
Is there anything that's fundamentally changed with it, Brian, pricing?
Second cost, even, as prior year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. All right, that goes us into our Board of Education section of our meeting for MSBA delegate reports. Pete, thank you for connecting the delegate assembly handbook here, that was handy. Anything to add, Keith, for MSBA?
Yeah, number one, I brought excess jalapeno peppers, anybody who wants some.
From the MSBA meeting?
Right. I just wanted to make sure, you know, they're over there.
I was just trying to connect the dots.
It was my time, it's my time.
It's your opportunity, it's your opportunity. Where no one else can have the floor but you. I get it.
I'm sorry?
I said, where no one else can have the floor but you.
That's why we pay the contract, because we get hot peppers.
Right. And on that contract, you know, actually, there's a committee of the Board of Directors of MSBA, which includes me and a whole bunch of other people, who are just gonna started to look into pricing strategies for maybe, instead of memberships, by selling service, and so, I don't know where that's gonna go, but I suspect it won't change how much we pay, but maybe we'll have to pay more than, but to include the price of the peppers or something. The delegate handbook, I don't know if you all looked at it, but it's, the, the big issues in there are advocacy positions, and there's a lot, and just in case you don't know, there's a whole list of advocacy positions that MSBA has passed over the years, and, you know, it's real long, it was on pages and pages, but it's the guidelines by which the lobbyists conduct their activities. So, Branch Shields and Mike Reader, the two people, so they go to law, go to legislators and talk to them, and they don't argue for something that's contrary to these advocacy positions. And so, some of them are, I, I would consider very non-contravertial, the advocacy committee is recommending these tweaks, and then there's, I think, four that have been proposed by individual school districts, but everybody has the right to do. I'm probably going to vote against those. The, the biggest one is, if you looked at it, one of the advocacy positions is about school choice, they're open enrollment specifically, and so the advocacy position, if you look at it, it says, we oppose it unless you cover all these five, five points, it's about funding and, and things like that, and not supposed to recruit people for athletics and things like that. Some school district has proposed to just chop off all these conditions and just say, we oppose it completely, you know? The lobbyists don't want that, and the reason they don't is because they got nothing to say to a legislator, and all they can do is just say, no, they can't talk about things that can make it okay, and so, so that's, that's the point of that. And then the others are kind of variations on that kind of theme, so, but anyway, I, that's, as a delegate, I tend to probably vote against those things, and for the ones that are, if anybody has issues with that, you should let me know.
Now, what were you saying about the sports?
Well, if you look at that, it's on page, if you open that up, you'll see.
I think it's fourteen, right?
No, twelve.
Yeah.
If you, page, what's the page? Well, it's, it shows up as page fourteen as of the PDF. And the advocacy position is, MSB opposes legislation that would prevent students to attend schools outside of their district, they reside, and unless the legislation meets these criteria, and the local funding stays where it's at, the school district's required to accept, not, is not required, no school district has to accept it, they can limit the amount, parents are responsible for transportation, you're not be doing this to recruit for athletics, that's one of the conditions, and students should make a one-year commitment. So this is the position that MSBA has come up on, is that, you know, it's okay for open enrollment, but we gotta, you know, these things should be taken into account, that's the point of it. And so this school district has proposed crossing off everything after, you know, the first two words in the, in the, in the second line. In other words, just saying it's just, they just wanna oppose everything, no matter what. And the law, and the point is, is that lobbyists would like to be able to talk to the legislators, talk about things, and if all they can do is go, is sit down and say, no, they're not really at the table.
And it looks like, does MSBA, they wanna add the deadline?
No, I'm kind, I'm still kind of lost.
I'm not explaining.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, for example, say there's not a football team at a school, and a kid wants, I'm just, this, this may not even be anything in this, but, so say there's a kid who doesn't have a football team where he's at, but he wants to come into our school district. Will there be any, will it tell him that he can't play for a year once he transfers in? Or is there, is it getting down to that nitty-gritty, so that it doesn't look like there was recruiting to get him to come to us, or, I, I'm trying to understand what it's saying.
Well, I think that if, if you're saying, the specific sentence says, measures are taken to prohibit recruiting or transferring for participation in athletics or other competitive activities. So I guess that that would say, in your hypothetical, the kid wants to come here because he wants to play football and he can, and the law might say, you can't do that, you have to go for other reasons, I don't know, but it's something to be, I think the gist of that is they wanna be able to say, you don't do open enrollment so that we can get all the best football players from the surrounding districts and things like that. It's, it's more of a, these are the things that they want taken into account. Now, the law can be passed, however it's passed, you know, we can say, you can, you can do all kinds of athletic recruitment and tuition, if they can pass that law, what MSB's advocacy position is, is that's not supposed to be the point of this.
But I think sometimes that might be, I just wanna make sure, like, that may be the driving force for a kid, and maybe that's where they think they're gonna be able to go to school, because they have a talent in football, and so if that's not offered at a school, and they wanna come, I just wanna make sure that some of these things aren't gonna affect something like that, because if a kid, maybe is a good football player, and his school doesn't have him, and he wants to come to ours, or whatever, and then it's not allowed, to me, that's a big, that's a big thing for a kid sometimes. Sports are a huge thing, that may be the door, may be the way to open a door for college or whatever, so the measures, it's a very vague term, so I'm just.
I mean, I think with, I mean, this is, we're not passing, you know, the MSBA's not passing, you gotta go to your congressman and tell them, don't pass this.
This is the MSBA's position, they are saying, we are recommending our position with this proposed bill is this.
If you propose this bill, if you propose this bill, this is what we're going to advocate for, not necessarily, this is like eight moves before the move.
If we're talking to a legislator who says what you just said, I think the lobbyists would say, well, that's reasonable, but what you wanna do is write the laws so that that can happen for good reasons, but you don't have, you know, that's the point.
So all of this is, part of what we paid for, is they have lobbyists who are there watching all of the proposed legislation come across the floor, right? Their position is, there is legislation around, open enrollment's been a hot topic for Amber.
It will continue.
It will continue to be. So what the MSBA is saying in this outline here is, this is what our position would be, right? As you go representing, I mean, representing school boards in general, you, Carrie, I agree with you, call up your congressperson and say, hey, this, that thing better not go through for the reasons you just said.
Because it's a guideline for, we have two paid lobbyists, and, you know, they need to follow what.
What we've passed.
And so, their, their opposition to this in particular is that, if all they can do is sit down and oppose any open enrollment law, they got nothing to contribute to, you know?
Because I know the parochial schools have some open enrollment laws, but they come from Misha, and Misha is, if you transfer and you wanna go to a parochial school, you cannot play sports for the first year.
That's, that's, all these things are in place, but anyway, I, I didn't want this to become a big issue.
No, I was just trying to, you know.
But Keith goes, he's our delegate, so they go vote on, here's our proposed position, and then our delegates vote on, yep, we agree with it, but we don't agree with the proposed position. Then the lobbyists, well, I don't even know if they get paid, but wherever they get paid, it's in the budget, they then have their marching orders to go sit down, so as any open enrollment bill or language crosses the floor, they know how to represent MSBA, because Keith, on behalf of us, voted on taking that language out or leaving that language out.
So they're representing all of the school districts that are part of MSBA? Not, not just Brentwood or?
Yeah, it's just, it's a general guideline, and, you know, they aren't passing, the lobbyists aren't passing laws, I mean, they can.
Take over a delegate and say, hey, go do that.
And they can, you know, the legislator can, I mean, they can write a law that says, athletic recruiting is fine and dandy and we encourage it, they can do that, we'd say, well, that's not really what you're supposed to be doing.
Right.
But that's, you know, another one of them is the little thing, somebody wants to, it says, the guideline is, all local funding remains with the resident district, and they wanna say that all local state and federal funding. Well, I don't think, I don't think we control that, and so, that's, in my mind, is silly change to make, it's kind of, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't point anything. But, but the point, and maybe it's a main, big point, is that Jamie just said, this open enrollment is a big deal, and there are school districts that are really looking at these advocacy positions, unless, and if they're doing it, it's because something's stirring them up wherever they are. I can't remember which districts, districts are like those.
But it could be other, you know, just outside of athletics, too, it could be, they wanna go to the school district because the school district has the same value system as their families do, right?
Or maybe the class sizes are bigger in the district that they're in, and the one next to them is smaller.
Exactly.
And, you know, like I said, right now, what is it, Clayton or LeDuce now charging tuition?
Clayton does, yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should be scared of open enrollment, it's just that you wanna sit down and think about what's the implications of that, I mean, different schools are funded differently, and all of a sudden, money can get all out of the way, and so we gotta stop and think about that.
Isn't, isn't that how the Early Childhood Center is, though, right? People could be from outside of our district coming in?
Right, yes, it could.
Could, I think when our kids win there, they could, but they're full, Brentwood is, I mean, it's full with Brentwood.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's how, yeah, okay.
Anyway, that's all I got, the, the most controversial thing I had was the jalapeno peppers, wish I appreciated it.
Thank you, and thank you for being our delegate at the State Conference.
We should, well, we'll talk sometime about what part of the.
But just, not to label this, so there, you can go out, there is a bill that's out there, I just pulled it up, around open enrollment, and so the whole premise for this is, the MSBA is coming up with a position around that.
Got it.
That's the whole thing, and they're, they're giving direction to the two lobbyists to advocate what that position is. I mean, I'll send you, it's interesting, it's been out there for a while, but, you know, on this one bill that's out there, a version of it, is just saying, hey, public school open enrollment, every year K through twelve, students are allowed to declare whether or not you want to go, it's just a proposed.
Yeah.
Bill that's out there, and so that's, MSBA's coming in and saying, hey, we want our two lobbyists to go get in the ears of people on the floor and say, we don't agree with these, these, or these, or whatever these points are.
We'll keep, I think it's, other states have completed.
They do, they do.
It's just one of the things that, anyway, there's money on other things like that, too. That's all, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Thanks for your update. Do we have any board committee update?
I'm a little brain-dead, I know that we talked a lot in our curriculum, I don't know if Alex has any top things to bring out, like, kind of putting you on the spot right now, or we can just kind of report back next time, but I do think we had some great conversations, and maybe next meeting, we can come back and tell some of the stuff we talked about. we talked about.
And, you know, the biggest one will be, once APR is finally released, I'll, you know, I'll come and do a full data review, kind of a student success kind of thing, but we hit a lot on, on how our kids performed on, on NWA and MAP and EOC.
Great. Communications?
Yeah, we're working to schedule a meeting hopefully next week, either the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth, kind of working through some schedules, but there has been some communication that has gone out in the pulse earlier, I think it was the beginning of October, that went out, a whole-page article, and then I think we also have some flyers, correct if I'm wrong, I think that goes out next week for the open house for high schools.
Great. And then finance and facilities, we've not met recently, but we will have a.
We met prior to the tax hearing, just to review the five-year, five- and ten-year plan, and we'll come back, you know, subsequent board with that, but that was our, our focus was that, I mean, that feeds into what we're talking about, Carrie brought up around the capital, making sure we had capital planned for other things that were not included in the current line issues, so Andy's done a nice job of working with Matt to identify what those things are, and obviously that plan will evolve, but at least we have a going-in position that allowed us to come up with a recommendation for the tax rates.
Okay, and that just moves us into the Missouri Ethics Commission, just a list of agreements to file, thank you for that. All of us, everyone. And then just upcoming events, policy meetings, conferences, Holiday Open House, December fourteenth, look at that, that's great.
Come by, Jesus, come.
Oh, yes, I did want to put that up, um, thank you. And, yeah, Keith reminded me, so I sent out an email to everybody with a, just a spreadsheet on the upcoming PTO meeting, so we're planning on having board members attend the November PTO meetings, and so a couple of board members have signed up for when they can, can go. And that'll be a good opportunity just to introduce ourselves, talk about what the board's responsible for. We've discussed, and this will go out in November, having community members and parents, if they're interested to apply to be part of our committees, and so we, that application Tony has worked on, and Brian and I have looked at that, so that's ready to go, and we talked about having that go out in early November, but we can discuss that with PTOs as well. But we'll have some, you know, some talking points to make sure that we're highlighting similar information at all the PTO meetings, so if you could just put your names down for any of the meetings you want to attend, come to all of them if you'd like.
Stacy says talk as long as you guys want, since we're not going to, she's not going to be running that meeting, so, she said you guys can have the floor for as long as you want, since she's not going to be.
I don't think these are going to be long presentations, there isn't a PowerPoint that we're bringing, but I think it'll be a nice way to reach more of our parents and community members.
Probably mention the Mark Twain one, where that was a, I think that's kind of.
Yeah, which is kind of neat, the Mark Twain, it's in the email, but the Mark Twain PTO meeting in November is going to be at a public library closer to the neighborhoods where our Tharpick students live on a Saturday during the day, so hopefully the parents that may not be able to usually attend our meetings, that particular meeting, it's in the evening, if they work evenings, they can attend.
So it's not at the Brentwood Public Library?
No, it's at the Julia, I can't remember.
Julia Davis.
Julia Davis Library, yes, okay. On a Saturday at some point, the time is to be determined.
We used to talk about having a board meeting at a location that was a little bit more centrally located, I don't know if that's something to think about in the future.
We used to do that.
Yeah, and we'd have like a dinner or something before or whatever.
We'll be nomads, yeah, we'll be nomads in a year.
First, now that we can live streaming, that's a little better, yeah.
Good, okay. Anything else on that list of items, anything else for open session?
I move that we adjourn and move into closed session for reasons stated in the meeting.
Second.
Do you have a roll call, please, Keith? Jamie Allen?
Yes.
Ryan Flynn?
Yes.
Chris Perkins?
Yes.
Keith Blenber?
Yes.
Keith Slosson?
Yes.
Louis Spencer?
Yes.
Kerry Charles?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder, I was online, I thought about it.